Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order Thursday, December 10th, 2020. Welcome to everyone. First order is adoption of minutes. I entertain a motion to move in second, moved by Jones, councillor Jones, second by councillor Manell. Any discussion, any errors? Being none, please call the vote.
Thank you. Deputy Warden Manell?
There is one error. It's just, and it makes no difference, but it's a recorded vote on section 6.1. It should be 8.1 rather than 9.0.
Okay.
Okay, with that amendment, are we all good with amendment? We'll carry on with the vote.
Deputy Warden Manell?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jagair?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes. No, sorry.[66.31][66.34][laughing]
That was a bad intention, wasn't it?
9-0, that motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, disclose your peculiar interest in the general nature thereof. I'm not noticing any, so we'll declare that. And presenting petitions, presentations and delegations. I believe we have one delegation, a friendly face from Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, Kate Burns Gallagher. Welcome, Kate. Good to see you.
Great to see you, and congratulations, Warden Marks, on your recent election.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Warden, through you to County Council, thank you all for your time today to present on the work that has been completed by the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus in moving regional economic development forward in 2020. In your agenda package, you have a report on the work that has been completed on the regional economic development in 2020. Alton has been a key leader in their support of the Regional Economic Development Programme and being integral in the early stages of the economic development strategy, and now in their support with the implementation with this comment. While this past year has proved to be challenging, we have had many successes on a regional level. This term has contributed, or sorry, this term has continued, but the strong focus on relationship building, along with producing on key deliverables from the strategy. The goal of the position is for long-term commitment that includes policy considerations as well as provincial and federal financial investment for regional economic development[168.84][168.87]initiatives. The Western Ontario Development Plan emphasizes a regional and collaborative approach to addressing a transforming economy and focusing on identifying regional economic development opportunities that have implications for all of southwestern Ontario. Highlighted in the plan are four regional strategic priorities. Each priority is centered on supporting and informing three regional economic development outcomes, which are all identified in the report. The associated actions serve to advance activities around each of the four priorities. And I'll just touch on each of the four priorities and what we've done over the past year and what we're looking to do in the upcoming year. So our first strategic priority is regional workforce planning. When we look at regional workforce planning, there are a number of actions we have taken. We have a strong partnership with Workforce Planning West, which is the collection of workforce planning boards across the region. Along with Workforce Planning West and support from AMAFRA, we were able to develop regional job demand and job search reports. These reports pull job data from all 15 counties to inform us on the top employers hiring at any given time in the region. As of 9:00 PM last night, Western University is the top job poster with over 1,500 jobs, and in Elgin, Foliago has over 140 job postings. This data helps inform us what jobs are in demand in the region, what skills may be required, and how the workforce gaps can be addressed. For 2021, the key priority will be the development of a regional workforce strategy. This strategy will look at the broad workforce issues of attracting people to the region and retaining them with a focus on housing, education, and quality of life. You can't have one without the other. Key deliverables of the project will include ways to mitigate locally market issues through an attraction and retention strategy, the development of regional market-ready kits that are designed to attract business immigrants and migrants to the region, and lastly, a report that lays out a model for the development community to build rental and attainable housing. And attainable is the key. There's a large portion of our population who are working but just can't afford the housing that we have in the region now. And part of that report will also help municipalities and economic development offices facilitate the development of rental and attainable housing. Our second strategic priority is regional infrastructure investment. Much of 2020's focus was on broadband and advocacy support for SWIFT. Wowsi Support, Wowsi or the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, if you will, supports SWIFT as the funding mechanism to advance the expansion of critical broadband infrastructure across the region. SWIFT 2.0 was implemented this year and intends to successfully address the $1 billion southwestern Ontario broadband deficit and achieve the interim goal of providing 50/10 broadband service to 95% of the population by 2025. With this, advocacy efforts have been focused on both the provincial and federal governments to secure funding. On November 11th, we were successful in securing a meeting with Minister Monsac, the minister responsible for rural economic development and the broadband portfolio. We were able to raise the profile of SWIFT 2.0 with the minister and voice our concern that western Ontario, where we represent 10% of the population of Canada, must also receive 10% of any funding announcements. We really need to hammer that home with the minister. Work continues with our federal counterparts on securing funding for our critical broadband needs. For 2021, the wardens will continue our advocacy efforts with a multi-minister delegation kicked off at Roma. Our third strategic priority are regional sector strategies. Partnerships within our key sectors have been enhanced over 2020, all virtually, including a key partnership with Meat and Poultry Ontario. This partnership has the wards providing support to ensure that the region has sufficient abattoir processing, as well as a skilled workforce for the future of the meat industry in the region. We saw throughout the pandemic that access to local and locally processed meats was a key concern, so we need to, the wards have chosen that as an item of key consideration. Wardens have also supported our member counties with three business survey templates and aggregated the results on a regional level of those surveys. Those business surveys helped inform our provincial partners on changes in the business climate from the start of the pandemic to the early summer and late fall. The surveys help paint a picture of the changes in each sector and which sectors experienced the most impacts. For 2021, we're embarking on a fantastic project with the Golden Horseshoe Food and Farming Alliance to clean, upload, and refresh farm business data, manufacturing business data, and third-party data, including food processors and other parts of the agri-food supply chain. Western Ontario has approximately 30,000 agricultural businesses and 7,500 manufacturing businesses. This project will map these assets for the whole of the region and will help paint a picture of our supply chains and where there are gaps and opportunities within those supply chains. Last but not least is our strategic priority four, regional marketing and promotion. Our new wowc.ca website is our cornerstone of our marketing and promotion, and it gives us the ability to best share our practices throughout the region. And the website was updated in partnership with AMAFRA this year. Data is a key component of any economic development work, and with our new website, our member counties are now able to access town folio data, so they're able to look at their demographics data and compare it to the region as well. For 2021, the wards will be obtaining a subscription to MC Analyst. This data source will be able to provide our member counties with data sets that include occupations, programs, industries, demographics, and input and output information. And this is all information that's updated on a monthly calendar, as well as providing us with projections. So we'll be able to, once again, compare each county to the region, to the province, and to Canada. So MC Analyst is an incredible data tool for us in 2021. Looking at next steps, a key component of moving the economic development program forward will be assessing the impacts that the pandemic is having on the region and how we can best position the region for recovery. With that in mind, in 2021, we will undertake a strategic planning exercise with a goal to update and refresh the strategic plan by Q4. So in conclusion, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus continues to move regional economic development forward in western Ontario. The pandemic has caused us, has challenged us in many ways, but we continue to deliver on our four strategic priorities. I'd like to thank you all for your time today, but would be remiss if I did not thank County Council for their support in this comment. The knowledge and experience I have gained over the past year has been absolutely invaluable. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate the presentation well done. I think they're lucky to have you. I'll open the floor to questions for Katie. Comments? Councillor Manell, please.
Just a comment, and then I got this from David Mayer, David Mayer-Bager, who was on the Committee for SWIFT, and there was a comment made at our Connectivity Committee that the larger, the Bell and Rogers are the ones that are going to get the bids. And he wanted to make the record straight that 70% of the ones awarded so far have been the smaller ones and not the large ones. So I just want to pass that on to those who are not on the Connectivity Committee.
And that information is accurate, and it has been acknowledged. So yes, I got the email as well, and the gentleman was corrected. Councillor Jones?
Just another comment. It's great to see how this has come along with economic development and the wardens. When I sat as a warden, it was infancy, and we're just getting the groundwork done to implement it, and it's great to see how far this has come. Great job, Katie.
Further, councillor Jagair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm very much interested in regional data that could help us and inform our own local budget decisions. So you mentioned this was coming, because is there anything available right now that is up to date? What I see is more census data from 2016, 2017. Anything available right now?
Through you, Warden, to councillor Jagair. So unfortunately, we are tied to a lot of the census data. With MC Analyst, a lot of the information is updated on the business counts. So we do have updated monthly on the business counts data, as well as some other sources around the business counts. I'd be more than happy to connect with you offline to talk about MC Analyst. I just had a really great tutorial yesterday about all the information.
Thank you, I'll endeavor to do that.
Okay. Councillor McPhail?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Kate. Again, as I look at your strategic priority, number one, regional workforce planning. Comments that I'm getting from many employers in my community is the fact that available employees just do not exist. They're not applying, they're not coming out, and it's really hampering many of the industries in the fact that if they don't have the required amount of employees to be able to carry on their business, and certainly some of them, their order books are filling up and not having the employees to be able to get the product out the door. So I see that it's to strengthen the access and quality of labour market intelligence. What does that mean? Is there something active in wowc to try to hook employees up with employers?
Warden, through you to councillor McPhail. I couldn't agree with you more, councillor McPhail. Prior to the pandemic, we were seeing incredible workforce shortages, and I think that pandemics only heightened the situation more for us employers. So what are the strategies that we're moving forward in? Does that have an impact for rural communities? Are people within Ontario, you know, housing? No, we worked, in trying to relocate people that have incredible skills into our rural communities, they're matching and had to support them. So now we have attainable housing for our workforce, we need to look at transportation as well. So that regional workforce strategy, yes, it's a strategy, yes, it's a document, but it's going to have some actionable items for our municipalities and for our economic development offices to try and attract those people. And we're not looking at necessarily even attracting from outside Canada, we're looking to attract within Ontario, because there are people here, we just need to get them into our rural community.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Kate. I've seen in my own municipality where housing is a big problem with trying to attract industry. We're looking at rental, basement apartments, that sort of thing, as being a good option. The problem I've seen from my own council is reluctance because of Airbnb and some of the negative things that have happened with Airbnb, and that's something that, quite frankly, we don't want to see in our own communities where a house is bought and turned into rental and turns into an Airbnb. Is there anything being talked about, how to control that from your end, or?
Warden Marks, through you to councillor Jones. Yes, definitely. And we've seen, especially in the northern part of the region, where the Airbnb has taken away that market until especially for our workforce. So in terms of, I think, renting to somebody else. So we're looking at that full picture. Looking at towns, has the fascinating, they've been for housing. So we'll be those willing to open some great initiatives, looking at Airbnb options.
Thank you. Martin, comment?
Yes, it's along the same line, Kate, through you, Mr. Warden. Port Stanley has, we as a council, Central Elgin, have added a lot of ones, and we're moving it into our official plan where there would be second, you know, apartments above garages and various things. But we're really having the same problem Collingwood is, in Port Stanley, they're turning them all into Airbnbs instead of full-time rental, as you know. So we are actually looking at a bylaw, and that we've been investigating. There is a bylaw, Toronto have a bylaw about Airbnbs, and Central Elgin are looking into that. That might be something you might want to look into and distribute to the various groups so that they can see how that can be controlled.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kate. Are we looking for motion to receive and file? Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor French. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Manell?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jagair?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. I think we're at the point now we need to move into committee of the whole, entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
By councillor Manell, councillor McPhail. Please read the question.
Deputy Warden Manell?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jagair?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. My first report is, Warden Manell, the Wardens Activity Report, please.
Basically, it is going to be a busy month because we had to get around to all the lower tiers, but the reports before you, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
This first, or?
We can do this one.
Questions for deputy warden. Seeing none, I think the report is self-explanatory, and absolutely it was a busy month.
And also, I'll move that.
All right, moved by deputy warden Manell, seconder, please. Councillor Jones, ready for the question?
Deputy Warden Manell?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jagair?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And I am seeking a motion to make the following changes to our council agenda today, adding the SWIFT guarantee to the closed item agenda. And the OSIF notification has been moved to close agendas as it was added to open agenda in error. Additional correspondence item to consider letter from a resident regarding Walton's masking bylaw. Consideration of an amended bylaw to authorize the extension of an agreement with Metavi EMS for the provision of land ambulance services. Defer a report from the county engineer regarding the Port Bruce temporary boat launch until the first meeting in January. And defer a verbal report from the CAO regarding council policy changes until the first meeting in January. I'm seeking a mover and second for that. Moved by councillor Jones, councillor Jagair. Discussion, ready for the vote?
Deputy Warden Manell?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jagair?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. On to councillor Martin. CM and Archives report, please.
I believe Mike is here. He's going to be speaking as well. I have some follow-up for him, but he'll take you through the report.
Good morning and welcome, Mike. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Congratulations.
Appreciate that.
Good morning. Pleased to be able to present the June January report on the Apple, Western Western. We were on track for a pretty good year and couple of habits. In terms of our total attendance, we may hang up around 300, because we're probably what our normal attendance is going to be for this year. And actually, since we've reopened, we're not really seeing anywhere near the level of visitation that we had before. It was hovering around 30 at least, actually, in those weeks, 54 March, so we were doing pretty good. We did get some programming in before we closed. We marked International Women's Day, a program that was co-hosted with one of the WI branches, Jarrett Clan. It was the performance of the famous five. We dropped the person's case before the Judicial Committee of the Purdy Council in 1929. We had about 48 people for that, which is pretty impressive, mainly WI members, lots of WI folks still going. We did a very good Family Day. We had a heavy evening for that, which was a normal turnout for Family Day. We had good activities that Ellie Shelley, her museum assistant, organized, whether volunteer, who were actually related to the exhibit they had on at the time, the Kilpatrick architectural exhibit, along with our regular medieval activities. Sally also did three of our educates, Terrace Lodge, where we closed. And I managed to give two talks, one to an empty group in Port Stanley, and one to the, one of the Alzheimer's Society programs, the Minds in Motion program that they did have at WI. The closure obliged us to make some changes to the execution schedule. We extended the Kilpatrick show right through our closing period to the end of August. We reshuffled the traveling show on tattoos into next year, so we have to be paying for a show known to continue. We did open hockey at Kedgeville at the beginning of September. We started British Larry Vinton, possibly because of our promotion. We decided that we would post on social media pictures of teams from the 1980s that we'd received them with the purchase of the Maxwell Photographic Collection. But unfortunately, they didn't have any names, so we thought we could gather some names while we promoted the fact that we had a hockey show on. So we got a pretty good response to the names. We now know a few of them. I should say there are hockey teams and ringette teams, so we grilled them boys, and we had a fair number of people come in actually to see themselves on the wall, which was nice. That promotion might have helped our social media numbers go up a bit. We've got a 16% increase in Facebook and 11% increase in Twitter followers. Since March, we made a pretty rapid transition to virtual programming. I have to acknowledge the assistance we got from our IT department, who made it a very painless process to switch over to online programming, virtual programming. I was actually invited back to the Alzheimer's program to do two live Zoom presentations. One was on Jumbo, of course, and one was on the County's Railway Room from the 1870s, which was pretty much the story that was embodied in the Kilpatrick architectural show. Both of those were live, and I also did a live version of that 1870s talk for the Quans Club in town. I planned to record that talk and add it to the two that we already have on the library's YouTube channel. I was also invited to participate in the Royal Canadian Regiment Museum's speaker series. I did a talk on the British Commonwealth Air Training Plan, which was our exhibition from the year before. In that case, I recorded the Zoom talk, and they played it beginning the day that I was supposed to have delivered the talk, and I also did a podcast for it, which was interesting. I turned a corner on the fourth floor into a little recording studio. The Zoom talks on YouTube, it's at 111 views, probably twice the number that, well, people would have seen in that, so we're thin here, reaching. We also took the closures an opportunity to improve our online presence. We went through all of our exhibition files, located a couple of catalogs, actually, some interpretive panels that we could turn into PDFs, and some of our installation photos. So we've got those all posted out, with the help of Curtis, that we got the contract. In the new year, we plan to see if the homes would like us to bring our educates through the residents via Zoom. This is something that we'd like to investigate with the activation folks at the homes. It's likely we have an offer of assistance from our contact adults on this, who can give us some clues about, you know, how seniors might be receptive or not receptive to what we already have in these packages. These are collections of artifacts that are based around certain themes like food, sports, schooling, fashion, toys. So we'll see if we have the right mix, because we'd like to elicit responses from the residents as well as provide a little bit of history about the significance of the artifacts. So we're going to do some reevaluation on that, for sure. The other projects we're going to be working on this year are mostly the result of the Bushel bequest. We already made some headway with augmented reality. That's that app, you'll recall, that folks can download for free from the XR Studios that allows people to travel through an area of downtown St. Thomas and Port Stanley and key into selected buildings or images and have things move or animate or change period, something which they call adventure. So it may be that a mural, it's very moving, billboard will take life. So we've already hired a research associate. We've hired Fiona Murray back, Fiona Murray from Belmont. She was a summer student for a couple of years, helped us put together that 91st Battalion website, Booker Remembrance website, which is still going. Booker Remembrance website, which is still going. Booker Remembrance is online. She had recently graduated from Centennial College with a certificate in communications. So we thought that was a good, a good start for this position. But she's working on many stories right now. She's working on the eighteen eighty-seven railway disaster. Great story of body snatching, and we put that up online somewhere for people to see. It's amazing amount of body snatching, great hobby that occurred in the nineteenth century. I would, you know, we check and see if any of her forbears are really where they're supposed to be. One thing, Thomas is complete early next year and it gets a little warmer, we'll move on to Port Stanley more than that. The other major project is a series of cycling trails we want to promote. The Bushel Estate's been funding a number of murals, which you've probably seen it in St. Thomas. And their thought was to continue to place murals across the county in connection where we can with existing or new cycling trails. One example is they want to take the Washington Building in Port Bruce, for example, create a mural, which is a good location of the end of the recently identified High Wheelway. We both, we get a mural, but we also get to promote the High Wheelway as a cycling trail. And we will provide, the museum will provide interpretive plaques at some point along the trail to tell people where they are, the significance of locations, why we call it that. Coordinating work for that will actually be part of the role of the digitization project person who is also being hired under the Bushel Estate bequest. So that'll be starting in March next year. Our program for next year, and I have our rack card for the year. I'll leave it at the end of MacArthur's table. Believe it or not, we're going to start the year by hosting an exhibition on a pandemic, during a pandemic, which could be interesting. It's called Unmasking Influenza from Canada's Museums of Science and Innovation. Of course, when we booked it, there wasn't a pandemic, so it wasn't what we're planning in my. And I must say, from reading the Times Journal of the Day of nineteen eighteen, we'd have a lot better than they did. Though, interestingly, one of the few strategies that they had available was relaxing the temperance rules so that doctors could issue more prescriptions for booze. And that was how you could stop influenza from getting you. Well, we've done primarily. Actually, for programming, we've asked Emma Donahue to do a talk on her book. There's a new book out called The Full of Stars, which is set during the pandemic nineteen eighteen in Ireland. And she's quite nicely agreed to do that. The other two shows, the ones we met, gave you a traditional knowledge from the Franklin Expedition. This is an exhibition on how the inuents' oral traditions about where Franklin ships were actually turned out to be true. It's a freestanding panel show on from the Canadian Museum of History. And then we'll finally get our tattoo show in the fall, what I've been promising you for two years. Finally, if there's a highlight for this past year, I think it's been the seamless integration of two new museum collections into the county's database. The countywide database, I think, is unique in Ontario. And now, with the addition of these two folks, brings ten museums and galleries collecting to the public. The public can search all the collections through ten museums and galleries. This past year, we've had the St. Thomas Elgin Art Center and the Gailey Derry Museum join us. The Art Center has about seventeen hundred entries in the database, almost all of which are illustrated. So you can sit at home and scroll through the entire collection at St. Thomas Elgin Art Center. The Derry Museum has twenty thousand records in our database. Now, of course, the first ten thousand are all cream separators. This expansion was very successful and we're very happy, but we're very pleased. I talked to Laura Warren here the other day about arranging the evaluation station. She uses it every day. They did not have a computer-based management system, so they're delighted to be part of it now. So I was very glad to hear that. I think those are the highlights, Mr. Warden. I'd be pleased to take questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate the presentation. It was interesting. Counselor Martin.
Just one other thing that I thought was a great acquisition was the Ninety-First Battalion Chapel from Trinity Church when it closed. They gave us, so in the museum, Mike has set up the chapel that was for them, the Ninety-First Battalion. They couldn't save the colors. They had disintegrated, literally. So we took a photo and they recreated the colors from that. But I thought that was very important. And I know the Spanish flu, I'm very interested. My father almost died of the Spanish flu and had a damaged heart for the rest of his life from it. He was seventeen at that time. So I was quite interested. I've heard, you know, I mean, he talked about it many, many times. So that will be interesting. And it was, it is interesting whether people will come right onto that after having lived through a flu, but it killed far more people and was far, you know, far more rapidly dangerous than the one that we have, because, at least in Canada. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, I think, to extend our thanks to Mike too. Because Mike and Ally, Ally has done a great job. She, you know, I mean, we had to close down for a while, but she's a wonderful support and Mike is so creative and we are very lucky to have him. And I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions of Mike or Counselor Martin? Mr. McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to say to Mike, I think one of the highlights of my week is either Mystery Mondays or Wednesdays, whatever comes on Facebook. I'm quite fascinated by those pictures and I, hopefully, that people are participating when they know where the building is or some of the people that are in the photos.
I think we get a little bit of response to that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll check with their archives, folks. They do marvelous stuff. Sitting at Mr. Tullow and they're doing a great job getting it out to people.
I have to concur with that. Just last week, there's a picture of Port Stanley School and there's a picture of my late aunt, my dad's sister, in it. And I recognized it right away, so it was interesting. And I passed it on to my cousins and they actually were quite appreciative. So it is, it is being watched, so. All right, thank you. Ready to receive and file? No, I will. Counselor Purcell and French, I'm trying to keep an eye on you at home. If you need to say something, please butt in, because I'm trying to keep my eye on the screen. But if I miss you, don't hesitate to interrupt me.
We, Mr. Warden, we appreciate that. Normally, it's Counselor French that would butt in. I would never do that, but I will in the future.
Thank you. Mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Jones.
I'll second.
Counselor Manel, ready for the question, please?
Deputy Warden Manel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Next report is coming from myself and we've got Sam here. It's the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, and again, it's been, it seems like a long time since we had our last meeting, Sam, and we're a victim of COVID as well, so. But, you know, looking forward to the new year and continuing the good work. Do you have any comments on it, Sam? I think the report is fairly straightforward, but you're welcome to comment on it.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden, I agree. It was obviously not the year we thought it would be for obviously the world and the community as well. As you mentioned, we're going to do a normal quarterly schedule twenty-one and doing important work for the county. If there's any questions from council, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you, Sam, and I would acknowledge your chairman, very capable chairman, Doug Mayor. So doing a great job and the members of the committee. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I will entertain the motion to receive and file. Counselor Martin moves. Counselor Ketchba, seconds. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Manel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Moving on to a report from Michelle Harris, Director of Homes and Senior Services. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. Before you, there's a report on the incontinence products for Algen County Homes, the contract award. The report provides details on the request for proposal for incontinence products and seeks council's approval to award the contract. The current contract is expiring and a new RFP was recently issued. The RFP document is attachment one in your package. And information that was advertised and posted on the county's bid portal page is attachment two. The evaluation committee is attachment three. The firm selected by the evaluation committee is Medline Canada Corporation. It was the highest scoring qualified proposal and thus represented the best complete quality submission. The nursing and personal care envelope within the Ministry of Long-Term Care Funding provides funding for incontinence products. Staff will continue to receive education and training and support from the contracted service provider to support individualized continence care and to remain within budget. The recommendations before you are that the contract for incontinence products for Algen County Homes be awarded to Medline Canada Corporation for a two-year term and that staff be authorized to extend the contract for an additional three one-year terms in accordance with the procurement policy, subject to satisfactory performance during the initial two-year contract term. And that the warden and CAO be authorized to sign the contract. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions for Michelle? Seeing none, do I have a mover and seconder?
So moved.
Counselor Manel moves. Counselor Purcell, is that your hand up?
Yes.
All right, appreciate that. Moved and seconded, ready for the question, please?
Deputy Warden Manel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Mr. Counselor Ketchba, you have a report on the Rural Initiatives Committee?
Yes, I do, if I can find it.
Go ahead when you're ready.
I believe it was sent out in a separate attachment.
Sharing it on the screen as well.
Then that makes it easy. Mr. Warden, thank you. Through you to council, the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee has, this is a report of the grant recommendations to council for the allocations for 2021. To summarize, the, the community grants and including the services and the festivals and events programs were revamped over the past summer. They were relaunched back in September. The eligibility criteria were approved in principle by council. The application deadline was on the November the tenth. And if memory serves, the total dollar amount requested in funding was over a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The budgeted funding envelope is sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars and change. So obviously, not everyone got all that they asked for and not every applicant was funded. But through the adjudication process and Table 1.1, which is now displayed, summarizes the requests, summarizes the recommended allocations. And included within the report is also the signage grant allocation of three hundred dollars to the Periscope Playhouse, which was from the total funding envelope, and the Fanchaw College PSW bursary of five hundred dollars, which is funded from the warden's budget. If there are any questions from council, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, the report is before you and we're looking for support from council to move the process forward.
Okay. Appreciate that, Counselor Ketchba. Do we have any questions? All right, seeing none, certainly want to thank the committee for their work. Counselor Ketchba, would you like to move that report?
I would certainly be happy to move that.
Thank you. A seconder, please. Counselor McPhail, I think just beat you out there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Manel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, and certainly good luck to the applicants and money is, goes to good purpose, for sure. Next report, Nancy, Manager of Planning, you're up. Go ahead, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, and congratulations. Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. This report on the recently approved vacant land condominium in West Elgin, near Port Glasgow. This plan is for nine units proposed for single detached dwellings with common areas and a private laneway. I'm available for any questions if anyone has any.
Okay, open the floor for questions for Nancy. Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, Mr. Warden. This is a project that, not so much the Lighthouse project, but certainly the East Side project that has been around, I think, you were a young man when this started, weren't you, Steve? It's been ongoing and I guess this is the next step in the process.
Okay, are you prepared to move there?
I'm prepared.
Okay, the report has been moved by Counselor McPhail. Looking for a seconder?
Purcell.
Thank you, thank you. Moved and seconded, further discussion? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Manel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Very good, thank you. Nancy, you're still up?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. County council received a request from Heho Developments with regards to the expansion of the Union Settlement area. Staff offered to provide this information report in response to that. The county will be undertaking a required official plan review in 2021. As part of this process, staff will retain a consultant to review the population projections, employment projections and land needs across the county. Once these revised figures have been derived, there may be opportunities for settlement area expansions. However, the county will work with the local municipalities to determine the appropriate location for these expansions based on the provincial policy and the county official plan criteria. The request at this time is premature, however, planning will revisit the request once the projections and assessments have been completed. This report will be forwarded to all local municipalities as well as any landowners who make a request through council, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Nancy. Counsel Jones.
More of a comment through you today. It seems to be, I'm not sure about the other municipalities, but I know Southwood are getting a lot of pressure as well to expand settlement areas. And I do agree that this is premature until you actually nail it down because ultimately, the province has the final say on this. We need to do it right the first time.
Yes, Counselor Martin.
Yes, I was just going to say, we already have quite a lot of settlement area designated in Union, but on the west side of the highway, not in that older part of the area. So it is premature and, I mean, I'm glad we're, you know, looking at it through the official plan the right way.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I can't concur any more vigorously than with what has already been stated by my colleagues around the table. But it is an interesting observation I'm going to make here. We all, at the, you know, the local municipal partner level, go through official plan reviews every five years and we all hire consultants to do growth projections and everything else. And it's very curious that we have to go through the same process at the county level to do those kinds of growth projections as well, whereas you'd think you could go back and take those plans from the lower tiers and just incorporate them into the county moving forward. moving forward. See where I'm getting at? Looks like it's a duplication of expense.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So actually, in the provincial policy statement, any upper tier is required to actually do the population projections overall for the county, for the region, what have you, and then allocate, actually, where growth is to occur. So there's certain numbers or certain requirements to have lands in certain stages, I guess you could say, of development, but the county overall would look at it as a whole, holistically. So to ensure that each of the municipalities have the ability to grow, but based on the current climate, the trends, which municipalities are actually the ones growing, that kind of thing. So it's our duty or our responsibility to kind of look at it on a countywide basis and allocate.
Counselor Martin?
Just for you, Mr. Warden, Nancy, that if the county are having or they're mandated to do it, could we not use the same figures at each of our lower tier ones so that we don't have to do or pay for these consultations, et cetera, for a second time for the same information?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Martin, we can and we will, actually. That'll be a component of what we will do, which makes it a lot easier for us to complete these population projections, employment projections. We'll look to the local municipalities that have already done some of that legwork, but it's just a portion, a piece of the puzzle, basically. So, and also, some of the municipalities are at different stages and aren't necessarily doing their official plan review now or have done it a few years ago. I'm thinking, I think Bayham actually did it a few years ago, so there may need to be updates to some of their information, for instance, or, so those will all be considered, which should hopefully make the price tag less, definitely, but, you know, unfortunately, I'm hopeful that maybe it'll come in as a lower cost item than what we budgeted for, which would be wonderful for everyone, but certainly, we're budgeting for the worst-case scenario, which is what we anticipate to be the normal price tag for something like this.
Counselor Ketchibah?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and Nancy, thank you very much for those comments, and I am hopeful that we can achieve some synergies down the road here when we next go through our OP amendment, or, excuse me, our OP review. Yes, we've just completed it within the last two years, and the reason I made the comment was because we did hire IBI to go through that process and do the population projections and, I guess, an inventory of available developable land in Bayham. So you know what I'm getting at here. If it's already been done, why are we doing it again? But if the county's going to take it on and do it, then perhaps we can use that data at our next round of review.
Counselor McPhail?
As the, through you, Mr. Warden, to Nancy, as we go through this county, looking at the expansion of the settlement areas, how much input does the local municipality have into that process? And certainly, I don't want to get in a situation where the municipality will go out and hire their own consultant to try to justify the fact that they need more settlement area because of knowledge of the municipality and what the overall achievement of the municipality is, the direction that they're going, might differ from what the findings are. So I'm just wondering how that relationship is going to work between the two.
Right, so it's a good question. So one of the things would be, obviously, to have the local municipalities provide their input as well, and part of that consultant that's being hired for this would look at those local municipalities in their local context. However, the county ultimately, our official plan amendments and any changes to settlement areas, those will actually go through the ministry. So the ministry will require the background information, the justification, basically, for any of these expansions. So for instance, if there is a discrepancy between what the county's information is and what the local municipality's information is, the ministry will have to take that into consideration when they're ultimately adopting the county official plan changes for, as a result of the OP review. We hopefully will be on the same page, and that's something that we plan on doing as well through this OP review, is rolling out to the local municipalities and hearing concerns and issues potentially with the official plan and working with the local municipalities, but that is something that ultimately, we do have to justify to the province.
Go ahead.
One of the things that I'm finding in my municipality is that, you know, there are lands that quite possibly could be designated for development uses, but it seems to be a trend that people are coming from other areas, purchasing these lands, and actually just putting them in an inventory, and they're not for sale, they're not for development, and people just sit on them and nothing happens. So then, as mayor of the municipality, if someone's to come to me and say, I'd like to locate a small manufacturing business within your municipality, I got no place to put them. So I think there's hopefully a consideration that the county official plan looks at areas that have a potential to be developed or are just going to sit and be in an inventory and used as like money in the bank for some developer far, far away.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, one of the other considerations as well, especially based on the new provincial policy statement, is that there is the potential to what's called swap out lands. So if, for instance, there's lands that are currently within a settlement area that are unlikely to be developed in the short term or long term, for that matter, due to lack of servicing, due to lack of interest, what have you, there is the ability to potentially remove the designation from that part and do a one-for-one swap somewhere else within that settlement area, and that's something that certainly can be explored as well. Obviously, we want to see that these lands are being developed in a timely fashion, but unfortunately, no one can control land ownership and timing of development. It's a very difficult thing to do. So certainly, that's something that we can work with municipalities on, if they're interested in looking at that swap.
Well, and a prime example, we have property right on 401 Infernal Road, and it's currently listed in Realty.com or something like that, and they're, I think there's 100 acres, they're asking $46 million for it. So the potential of something happening is not very great. So, you know, I hope that there's an openness from the consultant and from the county to take the advice of the lower tiers as to how they feel their municipality should be moving forward, and that we have ample amount of property that people are given the opportunity to maybe get into some development as compared to just sitting there, driving by and looking at it.
Comment, Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Nancy, as opposed to developable lands, and obviously, the last comment, we're sitting there, and it's going to sit there for a very long time because the ownership does not desire to do anything with it. It's been put to us that possibly you have too much already designated, and if you try to move it, you may lose it completely. Is that true, or?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, through the, I can't see there being retractions necessarily in settlement areas. I can see there being refinements, certainly because of new information or, you know, availability of servicing, for instance, or, I don't know, livestock facilities in the direct region that might impact development, things like that would be looked at based on that. The retraction of certain areas, I think, would only really occur if there was a willingness from the local municipality, for instance, I don't know, maybe there's some sort of impediment to a location of that settlement area expansion. Natural heritage might impede, for instance, being able to develop certain lands, and maybe there's a necessity then to kind of shift or move a settlement area in another direction based on that to avoid certain challenges. So again, but that would be something we would work with the local municipalities. I just can't see that there would be a retraction at this point because I don't see the population projections decreasing. I don't think the, I think we can all agree that the county has obviously seen some high levels of migration and immigration into the area, which means that we're likely going to see a trend in terms of population requirements, so.
Go ahead.
Would that be the same for industrial land?
So industrial land's interesting, based on what I've seen in the official plan. At this point, I don't see a lot of changes potentially, but I'm not, I don't know the full snapshot at this point and what's been developed in the last, you know, 10, 10 years, because the last official plan was 2013, and I know that there's been quite a bit of growth across the county in industrial lands, especially I'm seeing in the Dutton region. So that's another component of what we're required to look at. In fact, our current official plan for the county says that every five years, we will review our employment projections and ensure that we have adequate supply of industrial and commercial lands for residents.
Mr. Warden?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, it's Bob Purcell. Just to keep it in perspective for everybody, Dutton happens to be in the very final stages of our official plan. It will be approved next year, very early next year, and all of the problems you have brought up have been identified during our journey through this, and Nancy and her team have worked with us on practical solutions for everything you've mentioned. We're, in fact, even going to piggyback, as Ed pointed out, on the consultant's numbers to help with the settlement areas, but we've been able to place some areas we know are going to come into the settlement eventually, into future development areas and things like that. We've already swapped some of our industrial land for some additional residential lands, and we already ran into a problem with the MTO and access to a county road, and that sterilized part of our industrial. So all of those problems, I think our biggest thing to do right now is to give Nancy a chance and make sure she's got the horses and the support to get this official plan rammed through properly next year, and you'll find a whole lot more practical things are being done, like you're asking for. Our planner has been joined at the hip with Nancy for probably the last six months, and so we're sort of the guinea pigs, working out a lot of the problems that you've mentioned, but she's found solutions for every single thing you've mentioned as we've worked through this process. So accolades to her, but she does need the horses, and we're still in some restructuring in that area, so give her some support, and I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised.
Thank you for that, Counselor Purcell. Further questions? It's been a pretty good discussion, so thank you, Nancy. Mover and seconder for the report. Counselor Jones?
Counselor Manell? No further discussion, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. One more, Nancy.
Not the last, but yes, one more. Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. The Chair of the Land Division Committee does send his regrets and has asked that I present the Elgin County Land Division Activities for 2020. I'll try to be brief. As you all know, with the retirement of Susan Galloway, the Secretary of Treasurer for the Land Division Committee in March, and with the pandemic, this has certainly impeded the ability of the Land Division Committee to function and has reduced the number of meetings and applications overall. However, after a slow start, the volume of applications has certainly rebounded, and as you can see in the attached chart, it is on pace to remain at high levels in 2021. I would like to thank the Land Division Committee members on adapting so well to all the changes this year and for your dedication to the county. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nancy. It's good to hear the report. Questions for Nancy? Not seeing any, pretty straightforward, a good report. Again, a mover, seconder, please. Counselor Ketchibah? Counselor Martin, moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Mike, looks like you're up, please go ahead, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
And through you to county council. So this report provides details on the county's discussions with our insurer regarding the general insurance and risk management services for 2021. JLT, which is now Marsh Canada, was selected in November of 2018 to provide the services for a period of up to five years. So this is the third year of that contract term. The insurance program cost for 2021 is approximately $371,000, which is a 12.4% increase from the expiring 2020 premium. The July insurance update provided a best guess prediction at that time. Unfortunately, the 2021 increase is greater than what was forecasted. So as noted in the report, our insurer is stating that the increases are as a result of market conditions and increases in our property values, which accounts for the largest percentage of that increase. Luckily, our municipal liability policy is fixed for a three-year term, however, this is the last year for that guarantee. In addition to the increases, our insurer is also implementing exclusions to our policy regarding COVID-related claims. This is a Canada-wide exclusion that is occurring with every senior facility, long-term care home, and hospital. At this time, we are not recommending that the county go to market this year, even with the increase above the 10% threshold. We are recommending renewal of this insurance program for a one-year term and going to market with a request for proposal in the third quarter of 2021. The three staff recommendations are before you, and at this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Probably not the first time we've heard an increase from an insurance company, but questions for Mike, Counselor Mennel?
Just a comment, and certainly, 12% is unacceptable, but unfortunately, all the municipalities across Ontario are seeing a large increase. In fact, 12% may be looking good compared to some, so it's a pill we have to swallow, and I concur with Mike's recommendation. Some have gone out to market and found out that there's no advantage whatsoever, so I would move the recommendation.
I certainly, you know, you don't like it, but I think it's, we're getting good advice, so Counselor McPhail?
Yeah, I have a question, I think mainly to Steve and Julie. Do you have concerns about these exclusions?
Ask Steve.
Well, as indicated, and this is, maybe I'll make a general comment first, is that I think it is noteworthy that even with the premium for liability being fixed, the coverages are being reduced. And so, so we're getting, although we're paying the same amount, we're getting less coverage, and that is something that is being experienced province-wide. I think I reported earlier that the Law Departments Association of Ontario have, are reviewing this particular issue and are seeking to obtain at least some market advantages, but that's for next year. As to the exclusions themselves, there are concerns, but these are, these are Canada-wide, and we don't have any control over what exclusions the insurer actually implements year to
Go ahead.
Just trying to refresh my memory, has not, have the province not come in with some relief for facilities that are subject to legal challenges? Wasn't there an announcement about that some time ago, that people couldn't come back on long-term care homes or hospitals or something like that for?
I believe that there is some, there is some exclusion or some releases or bars to claims. I would have to get, I would have to let you know about what the details are, but there is some protection.
All right, I think we have a mover, and, okay, mover and seconded by Counselor McPhail. Further discussion? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Mr. Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
So the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next up, Jim, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and congratulations.
Appreciate that.
In February of this year, the past Warden issued a letter of support based on direction from council to the Minister of Municipal Fairs and Housing to support a project in Elmer on Brown Street by Walter Ostacek and Sons. The province has now provided, back in November, they made an announcement and will be providing one and a half million dollars of provincial funding to that project. It's a $2.2 million project. Walter Ostacek is planning on starting construction in the spring of next year and will be completing the project by the end of 2022. You may all remember that multi-residential has a ratio of almost two. That means that any multi-res pays double the tax rate on the same assessed value as a residential property. And in the past, council has approved reductions for affordable housing to bring them down to the residential rate. Elmer Council is planning on passing a bylaw in early January, or will be presenting, I should rephrase that, excuse me, will be presenting a bylaw in early January for that council's consideration. And if they do pass that bylaw, it would then be allowing for a reduction in the tax ratio, and they would be asking for County Council to pass the same. The implications of doing that is assuming that the assessed value would be $2.2 million, although that will be a matter, that will be decided by impact once the project is completed. But based on the $2.2 million value, at the multi-residential rate, the property would be paying $37,000 in taxes to the town of Elmer and $27,000 in taxes to the county. If a bylaw were to be passed, that would cut those taxes in half. I mean, conclusion, in the past, council has shown support for affordable housing projects, not only in Elmer, but also in Dutton and in Central Elgin. And in doing so, council is providing assistance in keeping rents at a reasonable rate by helping reduce annual operating costs. And the report is before you and will then potentially be followed up with a report in January dependent on what happens with Elmer Council.
Thank you for the report, Jim. If memory serves me right, we were up at the library in City Hall just literally before the pandemic hit, and we were out of meeting, and it seems like a long time ago. But I would take this as welcome news, certainly for Elmer, but certainly for all of us. So thank you for the report, and open the floor for questions or comments. Council Martin?
I believe very strongly that we have to use incentives to encourage this, and I certainly would, if Elmer Council go ahead with this, I would certainly encourage the county to do as well, because I think we need more affordable housing, and that's the one, the only thing we can do is to help incentivize it.
I couldn't agree more. I think this is good news. Council French, care to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, actually, to be honest with you, we've already had a bylaw passed a few months ago about the tax relief. What we're working on now is offering other incentives. So our staff are looking at different ways that we can assist the Ostaches, maybe with development charges or whatever. So I would really appreciate, as the Mayor of Elmer, any help we can get from the county to assist with this project, because as we all know, affordable housing is on the top of our list of things that we're working on as the county. And I'm very pleased about this project moving forward. So I appreciate any assistance that we can get for this particular project. Thank you.
Are you prepared to move this recommendation?
Mr. Martin, move it.
Oh, all right, Council Martin has a, okay. We have a mover and a second for the discussion. See none, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Menel?
Yes.
Council McPhail?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council French?
Yes.
Council Jagger?
Yes.
Council Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Looking at the clock, I wonder if we can take a short break, recess, and then come back? Thank you. Okay, welcome back. Our next report is from Alan Smith. Alan, you're up, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, and congratulations on the recent election.
Thank you.
Okay, so this morning, I am going to review the Elgin incentives program over the, and also the analysis of the past six years. We began the program in October 2015, and since that time, it has been well received by the business community. Now, before I get into the actual analysis and looking at the potential expansion of the program and what we could do in the future, I'd like to just review what the county's role is in Elgin incentives. Back in 2015, County Council endorsed the, I should make back up a little bit, I'll put my presentation, I don't see it, so let me put my presentation, I'll share it. One second, please, sorry.
Yes.
Great, thank you, sorry for the delay. Okay. Okay, so as I was saying, back in 2015, the County Council endorsed the non-statutory component of the Elgin incentives program, which defined the role of Elgin incentives for the county, which is to administer and to fund the program. Each lower tier passed a statutory document at each level, so each lower-tier municipal partner has a CIP document. When we look at the program over the past six years, when we look at the total program allocation by municipality, comparisons of total value projects with total grant value, we see Central Elgin had the most of the total value of projects and applications. That's not surprising, given the cluster of businesses in Central Elgin. When we look at the return on investment, for every $1 invested by Elgin County, $4.84 was invested by the private sector. So when we look at that on individual municipal level, we do see that West Elgin, Southold, and Diam do have the highest return on investment, and the other ones are pretty close following. When we look at the total program allocation by program type, we do see that building improvement and facade were the most popular program components. Now, when we look at the goals of the program, there's three of them, and these three goals were developed by municipal partners, the county, and our business community. And the approach to measure these goals was outlined in each municipal CIP. I do want to say that when we put together the measurements, it was a difficult process because this was the first CIP of its type in Ontario. So the measurements were, I will say, a guesstimate on some occasion. So again, we did our best to meet those goals and to measure them. Now, when we took at the first one, Goal A, which was to stimulate economic growth and diversification, when it comes to the agribusiness sector, our goal was to meet 12 expansions in that sector, and we exceeded, we had 24. Now, the rest of the sector is commercial industrial accommodation. As you see, we did not meet the targets. However, it's a little bit misleading. For example, the commercial component, we, our target was 26 expansions, we had 24. Now, it should be noted that if you take the commercial component of some of our agribusiness businesses, if you take those commercial components, that would push that expansion number over the target. So when we looked at the industrial component, we updated the, amended the Elgin incentives to improvement plans only last year, so this is relatively new. And because of COVID, we just did not do the marketing that we had planned to do in 2020 regarding that sector. Accommodations, we had hoped to expand more of the new accommodations, however, we didn't. What I will say, though, is we did help several current B&amp;Bs or ends to make for a more welcoming experience for visitors, which does help their businesses. When it comes to startups, we did exceed our target. We were looking to maybe expand by six, we had 28, so that was successful. When we look at the employment numbers through our survey, and we did survey 150 businesses, and we had 84 responses, now I should note that we still have 34 projects that have not been completed yet, they will be completed next year. Of those that responded, 17 businesses indicated that they did hire because of Elgin incentives, 34 jobs were created, and in total wages, $657,000. For every $1 invested by Elgin incentives, by the county, $3.55 was generated in wages. So our goal, which is to improve the quality of place, all you have to do is to drive into any one of our areas, our settlement areas, our downtowns, and you will see the difference. There's no questioning the difference you will see. And these are just a couple of examples. You know, we have Nard Jack Brewery, before it was an empty field, now there's a brewery. When we look at Walker Dairy Bar, it was a rundown building, now look at it, it's really improved, so we did exceed our target on that regard. When it comes to Goal C, to improve our sustainability as a tax base, one thing I'm very pleased about was we did have 14 applications that were vacant properties. After Elgin incentives, 12 became occupied and generate taxes. So that was a, I think, a very, is a good accomplishment by the program. Industrial, we didn't have any, I'm not surprised at this because we do lack vacant industrial buildings in Elgin County, so that is not a surprise. When it comes to improving sustainability of the tax base through assessment, one of the objectives was to increase the assessment base of properties in the downtowns and settlement areas. Now, in the analysis, we did list 10 businesses which did experience assessment changes. Now, some will be contributed to Elgin incentives, some won't. Now, there are some properties that have not been reassessed by impact yet, which would result in a substantial assessment increases based on the work that will be done. So overall, Elgin incentives has assisted in increasing assessment of some properties. Now, when we look at the program generally, and we look at maybe what else could we do in Elgin incentives, what else could be done? Affordable housing is quite a popular undertaking using a community improvement plan. For example, London, St. Catherine's, Cambridge, Sudbury, and many more communities use their CIP to enhance their full of housing. And I do want to be clear that last year, when we amended the individual Elgin incentive programs at the municipal partner level, to amend to include the industrial component. When we met with Central Elgin, and at the time, they were undertaking their secondary plan for their harbor development, they wanted to have reassurance that Elgin incentives could help with high-density residential uses in the harbor lands. We did put a component in the Central Elgin's plan, we then put them in the rest of them. For example, through Elgin incentives, you can have higher-density residential uses as defined in one's official plan. So you can use the tax incremental financing and brownfields, for example, to help with high-density residential uses, which could be translated into affordable housing. So that is an option for Elgin incentives. When you look into how we currently allocate money, it's a grant-based program, as council knows. However, places like Woodstock and Ingrisal use interest-free loans over a five-year period, and if you pay the loan back, you get 20% back in the grant. And this way, money is regenerated into the system, so you don't always have to put new money in, money circulates the original amount of money. COVID-19, this year, we did change how we administer the Elgin incentives program to help businesses who have to pivot their operations and relate to property improvement, and we were successful in that regard. However, other municipalities, like, for example, Haldeman County, look to develop a health and safety component of their CIP, which would lend to signage, different ventilation systems, plexiglass on countertops, for example. And the Ministry of Municipal Fairs and Housing were open to that. And normally, they have been quite close-minded, I would say, when it comes to uses for CIPs. However, in that regard, they are looking to be more relaxed. Now, end of the day, Haldeman County didn't go forward with it because by the time they amended their program, businesses would need that immediate help. So there is options there to look at how we can respond to COVID-19. So before I get into the options, what council can consider, it's important to note that if Elgin County does not continue to fund and administer the Elgin incentives program, the CIP at each local municipal partner level is still active, even if each municipal partner decides not to fund their CIP. There are components of each CIP, like the tax increment financing and brownfields, that will still carry on, you know, as these components require each application to go to council for approval. So when I put together these options, and I would say these are foundation options that you can build upon, but there's many permutations to this. So, for example, going forward, next year, we do have $80,000 from the property tax vacancy rebate that is allocated. Option two would be to enhance that dollar amount, available not option one, so add to the 80,000. Now, when we look at the history of the program, just averaging out per year, how much was available, it was just over $10,000. So my advice would be, if you were to enhance the 80,000, make it a substantial number that would benefit the business community. Option three, you could continue to operate the Elgin incentives in 2021, either at $80,000 level or an enhanced level. At the same time, if council and our municipal partners are interested in looking different ways or to explore the use of a CIP, you know, we could then, staff could reach out to our municipal partners, our business community again, and see what options and what do they want? What options could we include in an updated version? So then we could come back maybe mid-year. So then we could come back maybe mid-year and unveil a new program. Option four would just be to leave the funding and administration of each Algen incentives community improvement plan to each respective municipal partner. I do want to remind council that if you went with option four, uh county staff would still have to administer the remaining projects that haven't been closed yet. Uh, we do have thirty odd uh projects that we will be administering this year to close them out. Um, some of those projects, uh we did give an extension because of COVID. Um, as we mentioned, it's been a tough year for contractors and getting people to finish projects. So we gave many businesses extensions to to complete their their work. So, overall, um for an upper tiered government, we became the best practice in community improvement planning in Ontario. We were the first county in Ontario to develop, implement a reasonable approach to community improvement planning. Uh, this is an award winning program, which has helped support Elgin's business community over the past six years. And I'd like to just mention that uh we have seventeen uh businesses acquiring about next year. So there's a continued uh interest in this program. And I think County Council should be be proud of the work that uh council has shown in supporting our business community, especially during these very difficult times. And I would like to end there and welcome any questions.
Thank you, Alan. Um, it's a question from Counsel Jones.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, more of a comment, uh I'd like to thank Alan for all the hard work he's put in for Elgin County over the years and the thinking outside the box. Uh, I was there the night they got the award in Toronto and uh it was amazing to see the number of uh his peers surround him before the awards uh were uh banquet and and asking how they how they were able to do it and um it's just because of the innovation that Elgin County has uh given Alan the opportunity to do. Um, I fully support moving forward. Uh, I do like the idea of a possible innovation into affordable housing, possibly a loan program. I know Southold, uh Alan's team has supported Southold's Economic Development Committee and you can see uh in the stats that it did help because we fully supported this program and made sure that everybody in the community community knew about it. Um, is that going to weigh a little bit? It possibly might, at least for Southold, because we pretty much hit every business in in Southold that was interested. Um, but I do, I I would support it moving forward and investigating uh different options and uh I know industrial and the incentive for uh property tax is definitely going to benefit El- uh Southold and Elgin here in the near future. It's uh, it's uh part of an incentive that will bring uh industrial uh growth to the county. We need to be competitive with our neighbors.
Counselor Mennel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, certainly, I I uh agree with uh the uh the uh presentation. Um, Alan has indicated that this has been very successful. I need to send the message out to all the businesses in Elgin County that that we're supporting them under this very trying times, and they'll need to bounce back in twenty twenty one. Um, Alan has indicated that there is the potential to enhance the initial eighty thousand by one hundred ninety seven because there's there's a cut in um in the operating budget for for the economic development. So certainly, I would be in favor of enhancing uh the uh the program to uh to all our businesses in Elgin County and I and obviously there's a demand for it, so uh uh we're are already looking at spending over two hundred thousand dollars in the past. So um we'll beat the demand and so uh as I say, I'm I'm uh would support enhancing the program with the the uh spending cuts in in uh economic development.
Counselor Martin.
I'm going to have to say that I strongly support this program too, and I think Alan has done a great job, and we're going to miss you, Alan. We certainly do wish you all the best out in Haida Gua. Um, and it, I I think this is a very creative program. The only question I would ask is how do you determine if someone asks for a second grant? Like, is there, is there a different way of scoring someone who's asking for a second one than who've already received one in the past? I just am aware of at least one business in Central Elgin that has gotten to.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, to Counsel Martin, uh if you are a first time um applicant, you will receive more points. So if you're um applying for a second time, you you will receive less points than when you applied the first time. So, and also during a one year time period, if you apply a second time, you cannot um achieve more than what is allowed in the allocation of fifteen thousand dollars. So if you apply the first time and you got seven thousand dollars, um you cannot gain more than fifteen total for the year. But again, if you apply the first time, you get more points. If you apply a second time, you get less points.
Thank you, Alan. Counselor Ketchblow.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, I'm not opposed to the Elgin sentence program, and it has been uh used in in our community as well as across on uh Elgin County. Um, and I'm not opposed to looking at innovations of the program down the road. And I think uh these kinds of programs should always continually be explored and options brought forward. Uh, so it should be implied and assumed that that's always going to take place. Um, I'm not thinking it's a good idea to leave the program solely to the local municipal partners uh to fund, because I think it'd be like having an ice cream truck running up and down uh our village streets and things with no ice cream on board. Okay, so I think it, I think if we're going to have one in Elgin County, then Elgin's going to have to fund the thing. Uh, we know that uh the vacant commercial rate of eighty thousand dollars is committed to that, to this program anyway. And I heard uh Deputy Warden suggest that uh perhaps we allocate the savings from uh the uh economic development or whatever the operating savings uh this uh budget cycle to that program to run it through. And maybe that's a stopgap measure for this year, uh while we continue to look forward of what we can do in the future. So.
Counselor McPhail.
Uh, certainly, I think this program, I I know, and using Rodney for a uh for an example, has uh certainly improved the downtown street scape. Uh, I believe there are, I can think of right off the top of my head, four, four different businesses that have taken advantage of this and it has made a a significant difference. Uh, my my thinking is that, you know, uh when it gets down to one of the critical parts of any of our downtown streetscapes, uh you know, a lot of these buildings are over a hundred years old. Uh, my concern is is the fact that lots of times uh the roofs of these buildings get neglected. And the water gets into the buildings, and then the buildings start to deteriorate very, very quickly. And then the next thing you've got what's almost a derelict building on your street scape, it's sort of like losing a tooth, you know, you you uh it's if, when it's gone, it's gone forever. And so I I would really be interested if there was a potential that we could uh set up some type of loan program, especially for uh for the roofs on these buildings to ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and we don't end up with a derelict building. Um, you know, even to the point that if you if you do uh lend that money to a business or an owner or whatever, and by whatever reason, uh he defaults on the on the loan, at least you have done what you could to maintain the fact that that building is going to be there. It's going to be sound, and hopefully there will be someone else come along and set a business up in that building. So I mean, there's uh, there's never any gain without a little bit of risk. But uh if if we can possibly find some way to ensure that our downtown uh streetscapes uh remain sound, I think it would be a good uh direction for this uh this program.
Counselor Ketchblow.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Warden, and I perhaps neglected to uh conclude some statements uh in my earlier comments. Uh, I don't believe there's anything within the program currently that precludes any building improvements, such as roof improvements. Uh, and I currently, I understand it is capped at fifteen thousand dollars per application, per year. Um, and I've heard some uh comments made about perhaps exploring the option for a loan program. I just want to point out that I think we have uh other agencies out there to do loan programs, Community Futures Development Corporations and whatever else. And I'm not sure that this is an avenue that we want to go down uh as a duplication of of effort. Um, so personally, I'm not in favor of the loan style.
Okay. I'm hearing a lot of comments and a lot of merit in the comments. I'm, go ahead, Counselor.
I was just gonna say, I'm happy to move option two for one year with the increased amount that Counselor Mennel suggested.
I I'm wondering, um, I'll I'll make a comment to Alan, thank you for the report, and thank you very congratulate on your success and best wishes in your new endeavors. I I'm wondering uh at this point, um, if we should receive this report. Um, we've had a lot on our plate, ask staff to maybe reflect on it, come back early in the new year with some recommendations or looking to Julie. Do we need to make a decision today? Go ahead.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Warden, I think there are a number of critical components that council should consider uh when it comes to the renewal of this program. Most notably, we have some vacancies within the department that we'll later be discussing in closed session today. Um, as well, through council's action planning process in early January twenty twenty one, uh council may determine to uh review uh the service delivery review recommendation, which considers having a joint economic development corporation with the city of Saint Thomas. And depending on um how that rolls out, it could have a an impact on the Algen incentives program. So I think it is premature to commit to the program at this time, and I'd recommend that um perhaps we'd be in a better position by the second meeting in January. Uh, as well, we'll have progressed a bit further in the budget process at that point. So I think more information is needed for council to make a an informed decision on whether to proceed with this program.
I'm starting to see some heads nod with that, but go ahead, Counselor.
And then that's fine, I I mean, I agree, that's why I moved the other for one year, which would give us time to look at those other options and things going. I would just not like, I would like to see us doing something, this has been a phenomenal program, and I don't want to see it just dropped. So that's why I thought the one year would give uh us time then to make the other decision.
I agree with that, but I think I'm hearing early in the new year, we would have a report back. Uh, Counselor Jager, comment?
Um, yeah, I I just wanted that I I support the program, I I support also delaying the uh the decision because and and I want to congratulate staff and and recognize that um just the the level of accountability, transparency, tracking of outcome um is hugely beneficial, so thank you for doing that because it will help us in that decision. So um I I would support the, just a delay.
Okay.
I'll draw my motion.
Thank you, I can, Counselor Ketchblow.
Well, thank you, uh through you, Mr. Warden, I was just seeking clarification from staff that uh delaying the decision until, say, the second meeting in January does not preclude a rollout for twenty twenty one. Well, if that's the case, then I I think I'm, in my opinion, I'm seeing consensus around the room, but uh if you need a mover, I would be prepared to move to receive and file for today.
Okay, do I have seconders to that? Counselor Mennel, and I think that's that's a good move for today. Um, there's been a lot on our plate. Not so much my plate, but people very close to me. Just uh, we're not going to forget this, we're going to move with it. Counselor Jones.
Just a final comment, I'd like to just recognize Alan for all the hard work he's put in over the many years and uh we're going to miss you, Alan, good luck.
Yeah. Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, and again, wholeheartedly, um, you know, you've you've had a lot of success and all the best with you. Thank you for today's report. Moving, Secretary, are we ready for the question? Go ahead.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchblow.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Uh, yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Um, moving on, Brian, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and once again, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate that, go ahead.
The first report uh before you, um, as directed by council, staff have solicited feedback from each of Elgin County's local municipalities, the Elgin uh Group Police Services Board and the Ontario Federation of Agriculture regarding the use of off-road vehicles on county roads. Most municipalities across the county have or will be permitting limited use of portions of their roads to recreational off-road vehicle use under formal agreements, with the exception of the municipality of West Elgin, who will not limit um off-road vehicle use on the roads. In addition, the municipality of Dutton Dunwich has also permitted use of portions of county roads by bylaw. The municipality of Bam will prohibit recreational off-road vehicle use on all of their roads. The Talmer and the town of Almer is not included in the regulations similar to the county. As reported to council on its September twenty second meeting, staff had previously solicited comments from the OPP, the county solicitor, and the county's insurer with respect to off-road vehicle use on county roads. All parties endorse the prohibition of off-road vehicle use on county roads based on their experience and professional fields of expertise. Therefore, after receiving additional stakeholder feedback, staff's previous recommendation to prohibit off-road vehicle use on county roads remains consistent with its previous report. As recommended by the county solicitor, insurer, and the OPP, I can't in good conscience professionally recommend an alternative. Accordingly, a draft bylaw has been prepared and presented to county council for consideration prohibiting ORV use on county roads. Be happy to answer any questions.
I will open the floor for questions, Counselor Jones.
Uh, I I fully support Brian. Um, Southold does have a very short stretch, less than two kilometers, and it's on a road that we felt was safe to connect one trail to another. It's worked out good for us, uh do we want to go any further than that? No, um, we didn't feel that it was a safe thing for a lot of our roads and quite frankly, the county roads uh most uh the county roads in uh Southold don't have shoulders and uh would not be safe at all, period. And uh, I'm a little concerned that uh Dutton Dunwich should uh I don't think you own the road, so I'm not sure how you pass a bylaw on a road you don't own, uh quite frankly, but anyway, that's something for a discussion of another day. Anyway, I fully support Brian's recommendation, I would move.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Martin.
I'm willing to second, and certainly Central Elgin have done the same, we've allowed one ATV club to have some small portions of a few little roads, but and that has worked out just fine, we've just renewed that, but we've also agreed no ATVs on any other roads, so I I would be happy to second them.
Counselor McPhail, comment?
Yeah, it's just uh I I guess from where uh West Elgin's thinking is coming on this earlier this year, we had uh we were inundated with our uh ATVs from off, for all of our southern Ontario were coming down and using the uh integrous uh uh rail trails, uh some of the other uh properties along the way. Uh, unfortunately, when questioned by ratepayers, uh what are you going to do about it? Uh, I wasn't much, it wasn't much in our toolbox. Uh, so that being said, we uh I I did contact the OPP and yes, they were fortunate enough in sending down the the ATV unit, which uh quite honestly uh changed a lot of attitudes towards the uh ATVs that were trespassing on on property. So, you know, my my main concern is is uh, you know, we're we're just asking people not to ride on the county roads. When it gets right down to it, nobody has explained to me yet how that is going to be enforced. I know Southwest Elgin has no capacity or ability to enforce uh uh enforce those uh ATVs on our roads. Uh, the province has come forward and says that uh in their uh estimation, and I would hope that they would have done some research on it, and uh they've come back with the recommendation that unless we as a municipality deem we don't want them, then it is legal and the OPP are going to be the ones that are going to enforce them. OPP are going to be the ones that are going to enforce that under the Highway Traffic Act. So if someone can let me know how, how the county is going to, to enforce this bylaw, certainly I might have a different view on it, but as it stands right now, I don't think there's any enforcement tied to it. We don't have a county bylaw department. I've not yet seen that the OPP, will they enforce these bylaws on our behalf? I don't know that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's something that I don't want to be in a position where I have residents calling me up and saying, there's ATVs on a road somewhere. What are you going to do about it? And I have to tell them, well, I can't do anything about it. You can call the OPP non-emergency number and see if they'll come out. But that's not usually the response that the, the ratepayer wants to head here, that you've made the rule, but you're not going to do anything about it. And that has happened this year already, and it's a very uncomfortable position to be put in. I'd much rather leave it with the OPP and hey, they deal with it.
Thank you for that comment, for the comments.
Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's Bob in Dutton. I, I think our bylaws is just exactly what the other municipalities have done. There was a big vacuum and what we have done is previously limited the use of roads for ATVs that fall into the categories. It's been carefully put together. The two county roads that are acknowledged are just acknowledging the fact that you, you have to be able to have some sort of a connector that gets you in and out of town or to the gas station or, or whenever those things. So it's just a reflection of reality. But the, the fact is, whenever we do a bylaw, you can't retroactive it. So our, our agreement is to stay in place and we're like the rest. We don't look to expand ours, but it allows us to differentiate the good guys from the bad guys. Because the good guys in our particular area have been very good at policing themselves and going to the areas that we have approved them to use and to get to the private properties. And they in fact have been the best at staying off the Integris property, which we had the same problem that Dunk did. And I think thankfully Dunk got the OPP to come down and do a quick enforcement on that and solved a lot of the problems. But I, I don't have a problem with the county of being restrictive. There will be enforcement issues, but it's probably no different than we've got right at the present time because our restriction was you can't go anywhere except where we said you could, and you can't go there unless you're part of the group that follows the rules. And the rules are very comprehensive about insurance and helmets and age groups, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So either way, I don't think it's going to make any difference to us and enforcement's got going to change a heck of a lot. We have good enforcement in the controlled area that we have said okay to, and that will continue.
Thank you, Counselor Purcell. As Counselor Martin noted, Central Elgin did pass this. It wasn't unanimous and I think the two who objected to it, it was the enforcement part of it. Certainly, I think we all hope anyone using these vehicles use, follow the rules, are legal and are careful. But beyond hoping they do that, you know, if, if they come up and look both ways and go, the enforcement will always be there. I think Bob summed that up pretty well. So we do have a mover and a seconder. Further comments? Counselor Ketchblow.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden, a question for Mr. Gibson. And I realize we live in an electricious society today, but would prohibiting or off-road vehicles on our county roads, would that have something to do or would it have the impact of perhaps lessening our, the county's exposure to liability should an incident occur? Or is that moot?
I think that, that the liability risk is one of the factors. I think that what we have to do is consider firstly, right now, we are, we essentially have relied upon statutory prohibitions and/or statutory prohibitions, let's put it that way. The statute is changing and so the prohibition is now becoming a deemed permission unless there is municipal prohibition. So if we, if we are now going to, if we are going to now permit off-road vehicles on county roads, particularly in the face of insurance and police reticence to do so or opposition to do so, I think that you are in fact inviting, you are inviting a liability risk.
Thank you.
I think, I think if we do, if, if we do something other than prohibit, you are in fact increasing your potential liability.
Counselor McPhail.
Yeah, just, and I guess maybe through you, Mr. Warden, this is a question to someone out here, but as I go through here, the, the response back from the county insurer, it says, I don't believe ORVs have a place on public roads. Public industry is greater and essentially I see no liability policy claims. I'm just kind of wondering who this I person is. I don't see any notation here that our insurance carrier in a official capacity says we don't think this is a good idea.
Through, through Mr. Warden, the response provided was sought and received from our insurers. So this would be commentary verbatim provided by our insurers representative.
And that's the policy of the company?
It's, it's my assumption that it would be, yes.
Pretty good discussion. Are we?
Did I make one other comment?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
In response to Counselor McPhail's inquiry, the bylaw as prepared, there are two aspects of it. The first asked, the first is that there are two statutory exceptions. One is perpendicular crossing, which is permitted by regulation, as is limited use by those in the farming community and also those involved with trapping activities. So the farming activity would be the one that's, that is relevant here. The bylaw contemplates those statutory exceptions being recognized, and that was significant to the response from OFA. The second issue with respect to enforcement, the bylaw contemplates enforcement by a bylaw enforcement officer or the Ontario Provincial Police. My, I guess putting on my prosecutor's hat for some number of years, the OPP are certainly familiar with the statutory exceptions. And I don't believe that those exceptions would necessarily create a chill on enforcement. I do, I am concerned that the special requirements that were contemplated under the bylaws passed by the local municipal partners might create a chill on enforcement because you are tying in some of the permissions to things such as insurance and I believe, and perhaps Counselor Purcell can help me, I think they have to be members in good standing of the, of a recognized agency and those types of things. When you get into that requirement for documentation or produced, I think that tends to create some confusion regarding, regarding enforcement. So in terms of enforcement, I think that the prohibition subject to statutory, statutory exceptions, which are known to the, particularly the police, I think that that is, that is the, the preferred approach and will, I think be certainly be, will not act as a chill on enforcement. And I think that was more likely to be enforced by police.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, Mr. Warden. Steve did ask me to comment briefly. All of the things that are in the, our bylaw locally are the types of things that the province has done. They have allowed an exception with the Ontario Federation of Agriculture farming people. They have put in all the kinds of rules you have to have about being of age, being licensed, having a helmet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Our bylaws are, are just as enforceable as the province is. And as far as the liability goes, I, I can guarantee you, they, they won't name the name of the person they're talking to at the insurance company, but I'll guarantee it's the normal confusion. They're talking to somebody at Jardine or it's now called Marsh. I know the firm intimately. I also know the, I used to be actively involved in the company that does all of their real money behind the scenes, the insurance company, because these guys are brokers and they market it and they do a good job of running their own claims departments and, and trying to mitigate the risk from their perspective as a broker, not as an insurance company. Insurance companies fully realizes that it doesn't matter what bylaws you put in place, there will be litigation, people will try to sue. And the, the more rules you have around it, the better off you probably are. The insurance companies understand that, which is a different level because the insurance companies are the wholesale level and it's their money that's at risk, not the brokers. I hope that clarifies those positions of it.
Thank you for that. Counselor Purcell, ready to proceed to a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Menel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
No.
Counselor Purcell.
No.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchblow.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Seven two, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that report. Next up, Brian, you're still there? Traffic calming measures.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Warden. As directed by council, staff has explored alternative speed calming measures for built-up areas along county roads. The county has 35 built-up areas as defined by the Highway Traffic Act. For each of these built-up areas, a reduced speed zone of either 50 or 60 kilometers per hour have been instituted. In some instances, further speed reduction of 40 kilometers have also been established, including community safety zones. County staff currently informally and collaboratively addresses speed concerns raised by residents in partnership with the OPP to identify and provide targeted enforcement in high-speed prone areas. The Transportation Association of Canada's Canadian Guide to Traffic Calming Manual provides various measures referred to by Canadian municipalities to either calm traffic or manage speeds and identifies potential measures and their appropriateness, their benefits, implications, and recorded effectiveness. A limited number of measures are appropriate and recommended for use on county roads within built-up areas without negatively altering the road's intended function and triggering negative implications. Pavement markings, enforcement, and education are three categories of speed reduction measures appropriate for deployment on county roads within built-up areas. Specifically, on-road sign, pavement markings, and speed display devices are two measures that may be appropriate to use on county roads within built-up areas as detailed in the report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian? Counselor Martin.
Yes, just one question. You had mentioned they, in your report there, that narrowing areas or curb extensions were not recommended. And yet I know when we put, we are putting a crosswalk with your permission, county's permission in Belmont on, you know, Belmont Road, which of course will have a narrowing of the road as well and curb extensions. So that certainly I, we're, we're really hopeful that that's going to help with traffic in Belmont as well, but to give people a chance to cross that very busy road. So that, that was one. The other comment I was going to make was I thought the, the painting on the roads might be interesting as to try an area or two as a, as a test or pilot project to see how it works.
Three, Mr. Warden to Counselor Martin, two, two parts to that, to that response. The first part, curb extensions that are form part of a pedestrian crosswalk are required in accordance with the OTM. So that is independent of curb extensions that might be identified for the purposes of traffic calming. So those are still planned to proceed in Belmont and county staff are working very closely with Central Elgin staff in that regard. And certainly with respect to pavement markings, if so directed by county council, we, county staff would be happy to identify a pilot project location whereby enhanced pavement markings could be installed and then report back at a later date with its findings.
Thank you for those comments, Brian. Further questions?
Just one other comment, and that was on your electronic ones that tell you what speed you're going, et cetera. And they're, they're quite effective. It says here, you know, they eventually lose it. That's why I think the, the community policing in Belmont move it periodically to different locations. At the moment, they have it near New Serum School, but I think leaving it there all the time, you're right, people eventually get, so they just ignore it. Or the other problem I have found before, when the OPP had one at Port Stanley, it stopped functioning. So it is not very helpful when it sits there for two weeks, not functioning. So that's, but I think some of those can be very helpful, but I, I would agree if we put any of those in that they should be moved periodically because people just get to ignore things.
Well, I certainly want to thank Brian for the report, certainly the, the effort there. As, as you're aware, and I've grumbled enough that there's, it's a concern to a lot of us, that those are the concerns we hear from the residents. So certainly your attention to this, I appreciate. What's your will and pleasure to receive this?
Yeah. It's even going.
Moved by Counselor Jones, Counselor Menel. Go ahead with the question, please.
Deputy Warden Menel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchblow.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, you're still there? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Before I pass off the mic over to Gene, the county's manager of corporate services, to provide us with a, a brief presentation pertaining to the next report, I firstly want to commend Gene and, and Cole, our facility staff, on, on the short timeline with which staff, as a result of COVID, were able to turn this assessment around, as well as our consultant, who worked within, again, a very tight timeline, having to adhere to facility entry requirements with respect to COVID testing and so on and so forth. Secondly, I would note that the completion of the building condition assessment reports for each of the county's facilities, with the exception of the Provincial Offences Act building, is one of Engineering Services 2020 action items. With that, I'll pass it off to Gene.
Go ahead, Gene. Welcome. This is made for pretty good bedtime reading, so actually a lot of good information in there, so please go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning to, good morning to council. As Brian has kind of started off with, this, this report does form part of Engineering Services 2020 action item list. So I'll just present a pretty high-level summary of the, of the report. And then if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. So any engineering associates of Stratford was retained to perform our building condition assessment in the fall of this year. That assessment basically dealt with a visual inspection of our, other than POA, of all of our county buildings, looking at condition. looking at condition of structure, mechanical, electrical, and other major building components. And then using the Uniform Att Standard and the Building Owners and Managers Association International Standards to give us a review and a condition on each facility that we can then move forward with budgeting purposes and long term planning. So if you can please forward, Carolyn, one. So the first facility that was looked at is the County Administrative Building. This building was constructed in nineteen thirty nine. It's approximately eighty seven thousand square feet. And in the next ten years, we are looking at quite substantial ongoing investment with respect to your structures and exteriors, ongoing maintenance, mechanical and electrical upgrades, and those sorts of things. So if you could go forward one more, please. So basically, a condition summary of the facility given by NA. The building is overall in very good condition. And as long as we continue upgrading the facility as we've done in the past, the facility will continue to function adequately for our needs for many years to come. And a good example of this is the twenty twenty one elevator addition, which we are moving forward with, which is going to be addressing our accessibility needs and flow and some of the issues that we had with the, with the structure. So move forward, please. Next is the White Station Operations Center. So this building was constructed in nineteen seventy two. It is about eighteen thousand eight hundred square feet of the main building, and then there are about five other accessory buildings throughout the site. This building is currently leased to the municipality of Central Elgin and acts as their main operations center. There is quite substantial upgrades that the consultant has pointed out that will be coming forward in the next ten year cycle, both with respect to exteriors, structure, again, mechanical equipment, electrical equipment. And most of this is due to the age of the facility. It has been there for almost forty years now, so it definitely, or more than that, sorry, fifty plus years. So it definitely is coming to its end of life cycle on most of its major components. And it is something that in the next ten years, council will definitely have to, have to deal with the long term vision or use of that, of that facility. And I do believe Brian will be coming forward with more information to Budget Committee on this and probably council will be hearing more about it in the future. Can you please move forward, Carolyn? And that's just a summary basically of what I said. Next, please. Terrace Lodge was built in nineteen seventy seven. It's approximately fifty seven thousand square feet. And obviously, as everyone is aware, we'll be going through substantial upgrades, modernization, and in addition, in the next three years, which will basically address all of its needs, both structurally, mechanically, electronically, all of its major building systems will be addressed. Some of the ongoing upgrades that's highlighted in this will be some of the, of the required work that will be done to the existing central portion that we plan on doing in the next ten year cycle. Next, please. Again, the facility will be in very good condition when everything is done and just moving forward. Next, please. Bobbie Villa Long Term Care Home, built in nineteen ninety seven. It's forty seven thousand square feet. We are looking at like some of the structural components, one point eight two million interior maintenance and upgrades, that's finishes and those sorts of things, mechanical, electrical. Again, this is, this is fairly common through both of the next two homes, and it's just the regular replacement of major components as they come to the end of their life cycle. Next, please. The building is in overall good shape and as long as council continues to move forward with replacement of the, of the systems as they have done in the past, everything should be fine. Next, please. Elgin Manor, built in two thousand and three. It's eighty three thousand square, eighty three thousand two hundred square feet. And again, it's, it's very similar to Bobbie with respect to just replacement of systems. Next, please. The facility is in very good shape and I know we've replaced a good portion of the mechanical systems this year, some of the rooftop units, and I know next year we're looking at doing the same, which are probably the two, some of the biggest things that are coming up with this facility in the short term. So next, please. The Edward Street Ambulance Station, looking in the next ten years, basically it's roofing and parking lot and those type of things are your major, major upgrades, along with just mechanical systems that are coming to the end of their usable life. The facility is in good shape and again, as long as we continue on with what we've done, it will stay that way for, for quite a while. Next slide, please. Shaw Valley Ambulance Station, basically it's roof and parking lot are the, are the, the main components in the next ten year cycle that we're looking at replacing. And it's, it's a building is generally in very good shape. Next, please. The Elmer Ambulance Station, very similar to Shaw Valley. It's basically parking and roofing and just mechanical upgrades as they come to end of life. Next, please. Dutton Ambulance Station, again, very similar to the first two. All three of these ambulance stations are very similar, built roughly in the same time and, and are very similar in what the investment's going to be over the next ten years. Next, please. And finally, the Heritage Center. Again, it's a brand new building, so the consultants basically identified as long as regular maintenance occurs, we probably won't see anything, at least for the next ten or so years. So probably in the next ten year cycle is when we're going to start to see some of the more costly upgrade or replacements moving forward on this facility. And the POA, just due to the timing, was a brand new building, so it was not included in this study, but will be included in the next. So the final slide. So our next steps with respect to, to this is the Corporate Facilities Asset Management Plan. So of course, the BCA, it is a substantial part of establishing that asset management plan, where we're understanding, obviously, the current state of the infrastructure, measuring and monitoring the level of service of the facility, establishing an asset lifecycle management strategy, and then placing the county in a stronger position to take advantage of grant funding opportunities as they come along, because we have an overall plan with respect to that. So we are looking at coming in the early part of twenty twenty one, hopefully with a Corporate Facilities Asset Management Plan for council's consideration. And as pointed out, it does need to be approved before July twenty twenty one. If there are any questions?
Thank you, Gene. Very thorough report. Lots of good information. Thank you for that. Okay, we have recommendation to receive and file. Moved by Ketchba and Menel, please call the vote. Thank you.
Deputy Warden Menel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Shiger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, another one. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warren. Through you to council. Recently, the Province of Ontario announced additional funding through COVID nineteen resilience infrastructure stream under its Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. This funding investment is made available to support public infrastructure, including temporary infrastructure related to pandemic response, primarily for public use and or benefit. Upon a review, the program's criteria and eligible, an eligible proposed twenty twenty one capital projects, staff is recommending that the county's funding allocation be applied towards replacement of HVAC rooftop units at both Bobbie Villa and Elgin Manor, as well as completing renovations to council chambers. Subject to council's endorsement, staff will immediately prepare and submit the required application so as to ensure the projects will be completed by December thirty first, twenty twenty one. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Fairly straightforward. Counselor Martin, go ahead.
I'd be happy to move that. I think it is very straightforward and illogical.
And second by Counselor Jones. Just go ahead, comment.
Just a question, planning for council chambers, is there alternate council chambers while all of those, or is it just something that's going to happen over a week or two while we're not in session?
Very good question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. We are still determining the actual plan for budget, or for council chambers and hope to be able to present that preliminary plan to council in advance of undertaking any construction with timelines and alternate locations. So to date, we don't have an alternate location, but we will certainly plan for one and relate to council the extent of renovations that will be taking place, subject of course to council's approval of the twenty twenty one budget.
I thought we were going to go outside like we did Terrace Lodge. Counselor Jones?
Just one request, to get rid of these noisy raggedy.
I certainly agree. Counselor Ketchba?
Yes, just for clarification through you to Brian, the replacement of the rooftop units, is that in addition of the ones that we'd already talked about at our last meeting, or are they to be included in this proposal?
Three, Mr. Warden to Counselor Ketchba. It is in addition to the ones most recently replaced as a result of emergency repairs.
Okay. So we'll get them all done then?
Not, not all, but a significant majority of them, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think we're ready for the question. Go ahead, please.
Deputy Warden Menel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Shiger? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, one more, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Earlier this year, Natural Resources Canada opened its second request for proposals for its zero emission vehicle infrastructure program designed to bring electric vehicle chargers, charging stations to where Canadians live, work, and play, focused primarily in urban and suburban areas, and is a key component of the federal government's efforts to increase availability of electric vehicle charging stations across Canada. In response, the County of Elgin submitted a successful joint public-private partnership funding project proposal in partnership with the municipality of Central Elgin and Earth Corporation that will involve the installation of twenty electric vehicle charging station connectors predominantly at key municipal facilities throughout the county. A maximum hundred thousand dollar funding contribution from the program was awarded, and staff recommends that the County of Elgin's anticipated project cost in the amount of fifty two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars be pre-approved in the twenty twenty one capital project. It's also important to note that future phase, phases with respect to additional future funding of this program are anticipated to be announced in the near future. And if, if council so wishes, county staff would be happy to work with our other municipal partners to identify future locations as well. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, Counselor Ketchba?
Just wondering, is there any restrictions in the, the program that requires you to maintain and hold those assets for a certain period of time before you can divest them?
Three, Mr. Warden to Counselor Ketchba. No, there was no such requirements in that regard.
Thank you. For the comment, Counselor Martin?
I'm very pleased to see this because Central Elgin have been already, we've already installed electric charging stations at tourist areas, et cetera, and we're quite keen to start moving into some light electric vehicles in our fleet. So I'm very pleased that this came through, that Central Elgin is sharing in the cost, et cetera, of this.
Getting into the weeds here, Mr. Warden, are these metered charging stations or who's paying the freight on these?
It's for electricity. Yeah, three, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Ketchba. The meat, the, the actual units themselves, there is no requirement for them to be metered, that in terms of the costs associated with electricity, that will be expensed through, through campus facility electrical system. Discussions with respect to recuperating those costs and requirements to do so aren't a prerequisite of the program and haven't been decided upon at this point in time.
Okay. Counselor Menel?
Question through you to Brian. Brian, have you got any idea what the operating costs are? Basically, replacing gasoline with electricity, there must be an operating cost for these charging units that we're putting in.
Yeah, through Mr. Mayor to Counselor Menel, from past experience, having installed these units before in municipal facilities, typically charging a electric vehicle over a minimum or required period of approximately, say, eight hours would cost about a dollar thirty to do so. Just to put it.
Go ahead, Counselor Ketchba.
From a principal point of view, Mr. Warden, I've got a problem here, whether it's a dollar thirty or whether it's ten dollars. The point is if the rate pair is subsidizing the cost of, of charging electrical vehicles, I don't have a, I'm not in favor of that. If it's a benefit principle and there's some way to recover that cost from whoever's going to benefit from it, fair enough. I'm not opposed to electric vehicles, but tell me why the rate pair is going to subsidize it.
Fair comment. Counselor Martin?
The ones that Central Elgin are putting in, we've already put the others where they are charged because they're open to the public. The ones that we're putting in are for the works areas.
Understood.
They're for our own vehicles. That's the ones that Central Elgin are putting in.
Counselor McPhail?
That being said, Mr. Warden, then I would assume that the, the ongoing operational costs will be Central Elgin's responsibility and not the County of Elgin's?
For the ones that we're putting in, yes.
Well, depending on, you know, where they're located, it's a situation that, you know, if it's an individual lower tiers responsibility, that's one thing, but if it's expected that the County of Elgin subsidizes it, that's another thing. So where are we at with this?
Through, through Mr. Warden, to Counselor McPhail, each of the connectors located at the respective sites would be maintained, further to Counselor Martin's comments, would be maintained by the respective municipality. Certainly, if council so wishes, incorporating a chargeback functionality into the, each of these locations or where they are made available to the public is something certainly we can have incorporated as part of this project as well.
Mr. Warden, can I make a comment, please?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I sit on the Earth Corporation as a director, and so there's nine municipalities in, in Earth Corporation. So first of all, I want to say that we're thrilled that Elgin County is the first county that's come on board and are interested in partnering, partnering with us on this exciting new adventure. But on the other hand, the way I understand it, Elmer already have charging, we have a couple here in town, but we are getting more as well. And what? So when you park there, it's like you're parking your vehicle and you charge them. So they're, they're actually getting their car charged while they're uptown shopping or whatever, but in fact, they're also making a payment. So it's like metered payment. So that's a route that you can go. I'm sure Brian would have to look into it a little bit further because I know this is a little bit different than what we're going to be doing in Elmer, and I know Central Elgin's part of that as well. But I think it's a, it's a great project and we've had a lot of usage here in town. We have two charging stations here in Elmer right now, and we're getting, I believe, four more. So I think it's, it's a great project. Electric cars are a thing of the future. It's environmentally friendly and there are ways to get your money back. So it's just like a pay meter. So there's ways that we can look at this and see if it's more economical for everyone involved.
If, if I could, I have to agree with Counselor French. I also served my time on Earth. The need is coming. We've been, we've been assured. Did they say something wrong?
Just glad that you joined us on Earth, then.
Just glad that you joined us on Earth, then. I don't know where else you've been.
Our stay. The staff from Earth. Their prediction, this is going to be here before we know it. The need is there. Certainly, we're going to grow into it. So I'm in favor of this. The point as far as, you know, who's paying for it? I think that's a wrinkle that can be worked out. That's what I'm hearing. So I'm certainly in favor of this. But councillor Martin, go ahead.
I was just going to say, at first, we've worked with Earth on the ones that we've already put at tourist areas and arenas and such for the public, and those are all ones that are charged. People are paying to use them.
The reason, Mr. Warden, I keep bringing it up is because this has been talked around Bam's table as well. And until fundamentally, I keep saying, hey, if you're going to put these out there and if you're not going to find a way to recover this from a benefit principle point of view, I'm not interested. The list here includes four units to be going at White Station. Very seldom are county vehicles there, although they're a used one vehicle. It's Central Elgin, but it's identified that the county, since they own it, are they going to be the ones paying for it? That's the question.
Yeah, good question. And I I think the mayor and I could agree that Central Elgin would expect to pay that. So I don't think there'd be an argument there. I think it's how how you do the metering. And I think that's one of those wrinkles we will grow into and solve as we go forward. But I do have to say, I think this is great because I think that it'll be here before we know it. So we might as well start getting ready.
Hydrogen first.
Councillor Jones.
Yeah, I totally support this project, but I do agree with councillor Ketchblatt. There has to be some sort of aspect of metering that I don't expect the rate pairs to pay for other people to get charged.
Well, we have a recommendation. Can we make an amendment to that? You know, implicating that, yes, we expect the user to pay and let staff work on the solution to that. I think I'm thinking, sensing a consensus there. Perhaps Julie could read the recommendation. We'll get a mover and seconder.
Certainly. Through Mr. Warden to members of council, as in addition to the recommendation, it would be that staff also be directed to provide a report to council detailing the costs associated with electric charging stations and metering options for council's consideration.
That sounds satisfactory. Mover and seconder.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we've got councillor Martin, councillor Menel. Please read the question.
Deputy Warden, Menel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones. Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Shiger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next up, Julie, and it's, I think this is fairly straightforward, the council meeting schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through to members of council, as a follow-up report, council's 2021 meeting schedule is presented to you. It does incorporate all of council's feedback received at speaking with council, and I'd be happy to make further amendments or answer any questions at this time.
Questions? Not seeing any. Go ahead. Oh. Okay, thank you for that. Seconder. Shiger, thank you. Question, please.
Deputy Warden, Menel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Shiger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay. If I'm in the right place, we're up for items for consideration?
I just have one more.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. Each month, we share our organizational response to COVID-19. And I will just touch upon a few highlights as a couple of things have happened over since the last time council received a report. Terrace Lodge is currently in an active outbreak, and we have one confirmed staff member. We have visitor restrictions in place, and I'd like to commend staff for their tremendous and quick response to to this incident over the weekend. A safety plan has been drafted and will be presented to council in January, and this is a ministry requirement. And as an added measure, we will appoint an internal compliance officer to ensure that all of our health and safety measures are being followed across the corporation and in all locations. The emergency management team and Joint Health and Safety Committee are working closely together, and the joint EOC across the county meets once a month at this point. We will be issuing a survey to staff across the corporation, hopefully today, to assess how they're doing and to see if they have any suggestions for enhanced infection prevention and control measures within their workspaces, as well to assess whether any additional support is required for their general wellbeing. This is a it's been a difficult time, and it seems to not be letting up at all for staff across the corporation. So we will continue to support them as best we can, and it's best to hear directly from them what what we can do to best support them. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Julie. Seeing none. Thank you for the update. Mover and seconder, please, for the report.
Excellent.
Menel. Shiger. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Menel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Shiger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Items for consideration?
Mr. Mr. Warden, before you leave the reports, if I could just return briefly to the insurance inquiry that councillor McPhail had made.
Go ahead.
The issue relates to, and councillor McPhail asked about any statutory protection. I wanted to check on the status of what is now the Supporting Ontario's Recovery Act of 2020. Under that act, there are very, there's a statement of no cause of action, of bars to actions, and no compensation payable in respect of COVID exposure. But of course, with any legislation, there are requirements. The primary requirement is that any conduct has to be acting in good faith, which includes best efforts with respect to a public health guidance and any federal, provincial, or municipal law. So that's one requirement. And then the conduct can't amount to gross negligence. So there is protection, but there is a requirement. If you don't meet the requirements, you don't have the protection. In addition, there are exceptions which include that the protections don't apply if the conduct in question occurred when operations were required to be closed. And it also doesn't apply to employee exposures. So that clearly has some some concern as operators of long-term care homes. So the question was, do we have any concerns about the exceptions to coverage which were excluding communicable disease in excess of $1 million, including claims made with a single aggregate limit and indemnity and defense cost cover, excluding communicable disease absolutely in respect of long-term care or senior care operations, and excluding communicable disease absolutely in respect of medical facilities, testing centers, and homeless shelters? So do we have concerns? Yes, we have concerns because although there is statutory protection, if either it's an accepted claim or if the statutory requirements are not met, we either have we may have limited liability up to $1 million. And depending upon the type of claim, including if it relates to long-term care operations, we may have no coverage. But again, these are exceptions being essentially foisted by the by the insurer. I go back to my comment that we may, for instance, in terms of our liability coverage, we may not have an increase in premium, but we still may have greater exposure through the exceptions.
Thank you for that, Stephen. You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Items for consideration? First one. Go ahead, councillor.
I just, I'm assuming this is part of the reason we're deferring the other over the the other report because I think they make some good points about not non-motorized and encouraging active living, et cetera. And if it's possible, I thought the Village Association made some good points that I'm assuming Mr. Lima will be considering.
Okay. I think that makes sense. Councillor Jones.
Being an avid canoeist, I would have to agree with him.
Go ahead.
Just a comment, we can't ignore that we do have an agreement with MNR and the Catfish Creek and a number of neighbors that it's going to be put back to the original condition. In fact, township staff is also considering this and are going to be coming back to the report, so.
Go ahead.
About three, to members of council, I would suggest that some sort of solution be considered, which would include, whereas Malahide council has directed staff to explore this correspondence and provide options to Malahide Council, therefore be it resolved that county staff be directed to provide information to the township of Malahide staff with respect to any agreements that are in place and timelines associated with that agreement with the expectation that we work together with township staff to provide each of our respective councils with options associated with this proposal.
I'll move that to recommendation.
Thank you for that, councillor Ketchblatt.
I'm happy to second it, but a question first. Who was this particular letter directed to? Was it directed to the county or to Malahide?
Both.
Both. We got a copy of our last meeting, and we've directed it to staff.
And is it appropriate that you you you, I guess you say, defer to Malahide to respond on behalf of both organizations? Or should the county respond as well directly to the rate pair?
Through you, Mr. Warden, we both have an obligation to respond since we received separate correspondence, but I do think our actions need to be coordinated.
I agree. But I'm just bringing up the point that I think a formal response from the county is required.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, in my mind, Mr. Warden, who is the agreement with the Conservation Authority and MNR? Is it with the county or is it with Malahide?
The county.
The county has has an agreement in place with the township of Malahide to have this place as well. We have agreements with MNR? DFO? No.
MNR.
Okay.
Through Mr. Warden, MRF and
Going back to Julie's.
Jump in.
Go go ahead.
There was an application to DFO by Mr. Plant, but I don't think that there was actually a response. We also have a license agreement with North Erie Marina relating to use, which reflects upon on this, while there have been a number of representations made to other businesses and to the public at large as well. Not necessarily in the form of agreements, but there are there are agreements with Malahide and certainly with North Erie Marina that have to be accounted for.
Back to Julie's suggested motion. Do we have a consent? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Warden, I would just add on to my suggested motion that the warden be directed to follow up with a letter to the Port Bruce Repairers Association providing an update on council's direction from this meeting.
Okay, we're clear on that? Ready?
Yeah. And I'd move that.
Move it. Menel and Ketchblatt. Go ahead, call the vote, please.
Warden, Menel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Shiger. Councillor Ketchblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Catfish Creek Conservation Authority?
New point, isn't it? They passed the legislation. Have they not?
Councillor Martin.
Yeah, I'm just with this one here. It was, we're just looking for endorsement. I think they have asked today, I think tomorrow's the deadline for anything to be in. And I know Kettle and Catfish both, we, Central Elgin received them and endorsed them. So it was just asking for the county's level of endorsement. That there are certain issues with these things. There's some good things in the bill, but there's certain issues. And that's why we're just asking for endorsement, and I think the letter explains it.
With your will and pleasure, are we willing to do that?
Yep.
Comment, councillor Shiger.
I was going to say, my understanding is that the bill has passed on Tuesday. So I don't know that a letter would accomplish anything at this point.
I believe you're right.
House is recessed. That's true.
So it's probably a moot point. Okay. Item three, land division memo. Councillor Purcell, you're all right with that? We found out you have a road that's not a road?
Apparently.
You've been hiding it.
We're not sure it's a road. Well, we know it's not a road.
Okay, what do we need to do there?
So I think we need direction for the warden to send a letter to the municipality of Dunedin, which, following up on the request from the Land Division Committee.
I'd be happy to do that.
Basically telling the municipality to take down any signs that are there inappropriately.
Okay. Councillor Jones.
I would second that. I think you might be in a rock and hard spot since you have signs on the road that you can let your legal team take care of that one.
We have a mover and a seconder? Ready for the vote?
Who's the mover?
Purcell?
And Deputy Warden, Menel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Shiger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Letter regarding the use of ATVs on John Weis line.
I think this is a moot point. We already passed that we were limiting them, so.
Consensus to, okay, carry on. And number five, Jeremy Heatley with an email regarding the wearing of masks. With your will and pleasure with that.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
This is a point of order. Should we not reply to Mr. Verhage saying that this is a contravention of the
Very good, very good point. You direct staff to do that, then? Thank you for that. Will the pleasure with wearing a mask? Councillor Jones.
I think this is where the health unit needs to be, or public health needs to be part of that discussion, I would think.
I agree. How do you want to? It's a recommendation.
Of course, with Southwest Public Health, Dr. Locke.
Are you willing to move that?
Yes.
Okay, the seconder.
If I may.
Go ahead, please.
Yet to get into this a little late, I think we also need a legal opinion.
Possibly, yeah.
Well, point of order, I believe that Dr. Locke has been soliciting kind of legal opinions on forced masking. At Southwest, so simply by referring this request to Southwest Public Health, let them deal with it.
I agree with that.
I think that's
McPhail.
Refer this to the chief medical officer of health. We've got no power over it.
We've been relying on them for twice as long. Our mover and seconder agreeing with that? Take that action? Take that action. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Items for information? Any we want to deal with or talk of odor? Your own pleasure.
I'll receive a file and I'll move that.
Second or? McPhail, discussion? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay. And where does that take us to?
Statements.
Statements and inquiries. Do we have any? Counselor Martin, please.
I wanted to bring up a request from Emily February from Catfish Creek. She's applying for a grant. And you were each just received from Catherine this morning an email, a copy of your request and what they're asking for. They just want a letter of support. They require that to show that the community supports the idea. And what it's going to be is yoga in the forest. And it's going to be geared mainly to women, especially young women in one part of the thing that they're doing. And the other one is women going through postpartum after having children and some of the postpartum depression, mental health. We know that natural environments do help with mental health. And that is what Emily is working on, is starting this, this project Yoga in the Forest. It's a one-year trial run, but there's this, she needs, in order to apply for this grant, she needs community, a letter that the community supported. So that's why it was sent to Elgin County, because it's to service all of Elgin County.
All right, thank you for that information. Counselor Mennel?
My question would be certainly, obviously, the second part, where it's postpartum depression, men aren't included. But I think the first part, my wife and I have taken yoga for about 25 years and I thoroughly enjoy it. So I think that men should be included firstly, in the first part.
I don't object. I agree. I take, I've done yoga for years too, and there are a couple of men in that group as well. But I'm not certain why. She has a yoga instructor in line that will be doing the yoga. And I don't know if that's why or not. I think what they're trying to do is get more young women out into the forests, et cetera. But I certainly can speak to Emily and ask her to change the first one.
Oh, I would suggest that. I mean, you opened it up. Seems rather exclusive, but.
Doesn't have to say women at all. The second one certainly could be. Or, I mean, obviously, postnatal would not be suitable for men.
Counselor Jagger, go ahead, please.
My, my question is the connection with Catfish Creek Conservation Authority. And I mean, at a time where the mandate and what's, you know, core mandate and not core mandate is very contentious, this could further aggravate those discussions when this would say, this is not the mandate of a conservation authority to be offering yoga classes. So I, I don't think it would be appropriate. And I don't think the county means that, if she needs support from the community, I don't think it should come from the county to support this.
Counselor McPhail?
Who is, who is this grant being put to?
Canadian Parks and Recreation Association.
Is that a government body?
It's the, the association is asking for people to, to increase participation in retention of girls and women in recreational sports in Canada. And this grant, she's asking for this, for yoga in the forest, utilizing a yoga instructor, two separate classes, one of which will be open to women of any age. And the reason is the women thing is because that's what the grant is, is emphasizing, is to try and get more women out. And not-for-profits are allowed to apply, but they must include a letter of support, which demonstrates the direct partnership with the community that the project will serve, which I'm hoping will reach all across Dogg County. I have attached a draft letter, support for your review. And just something she asked that the county to think about. Could they support it? Because she requires a letter of support in order to apply.
Counselor Ketchba?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to Counselor Martin, perhaps the most familiar with this. Is there any anticipation that this program would require levy dollars? So.
It's totally.
There's a counselor, Counselor Jagger's point, and she's correct. If, if it is something that's going to require levy dollars, then yes, that is beyond the core mandate of the authority. Otherwise, if this is funded elsewhere, I'm not sure the government would have much objection. You know, the optics are bad. I'll give you that.
Counselor?
So, thank you, Mr. Warden. So I can understand she needs to be associated with the not-for-profit because she herself is not a, not a corporation and not-for-profit. So I just think there are other partners that could offer that, that have a, whether it's, you know, other women's organizations, wellness organizations that are not-for-profit. This doesn't appear as the right partner, so I would not support it.
Counselor Mennel?
I think the important thing is that they're using our Conservation Authority land to do this. And certainly, we want to enhance the, the public using the parks for recreation that had no cost to the Conservation Authority. So certainly, I would endorse it because I think we need to, to use the facilities that we have and at no cost. So I would support this, provided it includes men.
You're the hell out of school.
Have to dress up as a woman again.
I don't want to go there, Sal.
Further discussion? Are you ready for vote?
We need a motion, correct? I, I will move that we offer a letter of support for this.
No, second up. Okay, moved in second? Everyone clear? Call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
No.
Counselor Ketchba?
No.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Seven two, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Lost my spot. Next, what's next item?
Notice of motion?
Oh, yes. Notice of motion, do we have any? Seeing none? Matters of urgency? Seeing none, thank goodness. Closed meeting items? We do have a need to go in closed? We need to read? Do we need a motion to go into closed session? Okay, entertain more. Ketchba, Jones? Call the vote, please.
Warden?
Yes, and just a point of order, I think you need to have justification to go into closed session.
Are available in your agenda. So you don't have to read them aloud. It is at the discretion of the warden.
Can I have the clock? I think we'll move on. We do have a bunch of meeting at one. If that's all right, please call.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger? Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried. And that bylaw 20-61, being a bylaw to authorize the extension of an agreement with Metavi EMS for the provision of land ambulance services in Elgin County, be considered for enactment.
Moved by French, second by Jones, in favor.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones? Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried. For closed meeting item number two, be it resolved that the verbal report from the chief administrative officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Okay, moved by Martin, second by Ketchba. Call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried. For closed meeting item number three, whereas Elgin County is a member of Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology, or SWIFT, and council invested in SWIFT to leverage federal, provincial, and private sector funding for fiber projects located in municipalities in southwestern Ontario. And whereas SWIFT has requested that Elgin County provide cash flow assistance on the upcoming anticipated $6 million investment of fiber optic internet infrastructure construction projects within Elgin County. And whereas council previously agreed in principle to guarantee the amount of $2.1 million in support of a credit facility to support SWIFT with short-term bridge financing. And following review by the county solicitor, the council resolution on its terms does not expressly authorize signature of any specific guarantee document. And given the guarantee is fundamentally inconsistent with the original council resolution, therefore be it resolved that council agree to provide the Toronto Dominion Bank with a guarantee of the obligations of Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology Incorporated in the amount of $1.119 million, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to execute the attached guarantee, and that a copy of the council resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the guarantee be sent to SWIFT along with two executed copies of the guarantee, and that an opinion signed by the county solicitor confirming that the guarantee has been duly authorized, executed, and delivered, and that it constitutes a good, valid, and binding and enforceable obligation be sent to SWIFT.
Would you like that repeated?
Backwards.
So moved. Moved by Mennel, second by Jones, thank you.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
For closed session item number four, OSIF notification, be it respond, be it resolved that the correspondence from the province of Ontario be received.
Over, Jones, Jagger, call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay. Recommendations, committee of the whole? Moved by Mart, Counsel Martin? Second by Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Consideration of bylaws?
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 20-61, being a bylaw to authorize the extension of a contract with Metavi EMS for the provision of land ambulance services in Elgin County.
By McPhail? Second by Mennel? Vote, please.
Deputy Warden, Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried. Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 20-62,